All right, we'll now call the city council regular meeting to order. The invocation of the State of Allegiance, invocation given by Colonel Shirley Johnson.
Holy Father, we come before you again, and we've been before you all evening, and we thank you for your grace. Father, we thank you for your mercy, and we thank you, Father God, that you have given ear to what has been said tonight on this day. Father, we ask that you would continue to guide us with your wisdom, Father God, continue to put us together, Father God, that there will be no division. Father, continue to bless the city of Avon Park, the state of Florida, and the United States of America, and around the world. Father, we thank you for what you are doing. We know that you do not speak a slumber. Thank you, Father God, for bringing us together, Father God, and thank you, Father God, for blessing our town. Thank you, Father God, for every person that's in this room, Father God. Whatever the needs are, we know that you would take care of it. Whatever the needs are for Avon Park, you are looking out for us. And we give you glory and praise for that, Father, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Please have a roll call.
Member Gray.
Yeah.
Member Johnson.
Yeah.
Member Sutherland. Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. First up, we have reappoint Mr. Warren West as the fifth trustee on the Avon Park Fire Pension Board, and Chrissy Stoker, Foster and Foster, City Manager Mark Schrader. So, this will be to reappoint Warren West, as I said, to the pension board, long-serving member, long-serving personnel in Avon Park. Anyone here to make a motion?
I'd be glad to make a motion. Go ahead and approve Warren West as the fifth trustee to the pension board. Before.
Say.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any further questions? The panel will call a roll.
Member Curry.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next up, we have the consent agenda. This will be approving the minutes from eight, nine, eight-nine, and eight-sixteen. The council regular meeting, special council meeting, and then a special council meeting. Do we have a motion?
Want to approve the consent agenda.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions?
This is on all three meetings.
All three.
Yep.
The panel questions will call a roll.
Member Curry.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, now we get into item number six. It's the discussion of draft lease at Avon Park Central Airport. We have Mr. Paul Clary with us. We're gonna have Mr. David Bernard on. We do, okay. Mr. Clary, you have provided us with a handout. I'm assuming that's where you would like to start.
Yes, sir. Just to summarize, we have been in discussions with fam.
Go over that microphone again. We've been having trouble with that microphone all night.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We've been having discussions with fam for a number of weeks, and also talked to FAA, and they'll guide us through this. The good news is, we've got many, many items in agreement. Policy items that we'd like to present to the board in the next second, and also allow.
Okay.
Just briefly, the handout on page two, the only change here is there are negotiations that have changed.
Mr. Clary, just to reiterate, you're gonna have to almost yell into that microphone if I present here. Otherwise, we'll never pick it up on record.
Well, that's loading. Page two just summarizes your negotiations, and essentially, your main options are still on the same page.
Only I can tell you the one option that I don't agree with, the last one that says sell.
Yeah.
Airport.
The next page just is another repeat you've seen before, which is the major goals. Page three, which is operation improvement of the airport, longer economic development, within the overall airport. So there's that one change. And the first item up for your consideration is the scope of what those employees, which is the top item. Airport operations, which will include runway, taxiway, make room, FBO, et cetera, lighting systems, security, and so forth. Aeronautical activity, which would include your parents and related activities to operate the land. Non-aeronautical activity, which would include plastic plating and make room. And then clarify, the vacant land would be identified by fam depending what would be aeronautical versus what would be water. That would be what's called a layup. Okay? And they have to do that as part of our city level. So, included is the ball field and water sewer facility, and we've been told by fam that are in agreement with the scope. The rent for the scope was included in the lease. FAA and FDOT require will dispute their market value. Fam is preparing what is called an MAI appraisal, which is to require an appraisal. We needed to decide the item scope, which we've done, and then we keep that quote for either a review or appraisal by the city. Then we talk to the appraiser, and they are waiting for the scope, so they can get this item.
Okay.
So we'll be able to get that back.
Do you need an approval of the scope at this point, or?
If you want to do that now, that would be great.
Okay. Is there any proposed changes to the scope at this point from the council?
Has fam done an MAI appraisal yet?
No, sir. That takes several weeks to get done. They've done what's called a broker's opinion, which you've been provided previously in the packet, but the MAI appraisal is really also waiting on the scope as well, so it drives that way.
I don't have a problem with the scope. Please look for any changes. There's no changes by the council, but we need a motion. So, for the scope. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any further questions?
Yes, I do. Go ahead. We talked last meeting about this concern whether we would do our own MAI or preview. That will also what we're going on tonight?
No, this scope had to be approved in order to get a quote for that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. It's in the tablet that we gave to us on the lease summary. Net revenues and transaction rent. They recommend that the justice city share of net revenue would be 50% providing afterwards.
Yeah, we're only, we're only approving this. Yeah, we're only approving the scope, not actual meat of the lease itself. This is not binding us to any lease at this point. This is just under the scope of the lease, so we can get the quotes.
Okay.
Any further questions? The panel will call a roll.
Who made the motion?
The motion was made by Mr. Gray, seconded by Ms. Johnson.
We'll call a roll.
Member Gray.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, there you take it away.
So moving to the next item, which is the rent. You can focus on the first bullet. We have proposed monthly in the lease that you were provided, fam has requested that 50% of the rent. That's one item. The second item is what's credited towards the rent. Fam has requested that all investments, like aeronautical and non-aeronautical, made by fam be included in the rent credit, and what you have for you now is all aeronautical. So that's a policy question. The third item is, we had included in the lease, FAA allows you to recover prior expenses the city must put into the airport from, like, general fund, up to six years. So it will allow you to essentially pay yourself back for prior expenses that you've been going to the general.
We set the terms of that repayment?
Pardon?
We set the terms of that repayment. So if there was money sought, we could spread that over whatever term we see fit, or is there rules for that?
We can, we can set the terms for that. The only thing FAA says is you can only get back to six years.
I see.
So it's kind of a rolling six year.
Do we have any idea what that figure is at this point?
No, sir, we don't. There are several fairly large items that we don't such as the amount of cleanup and some other things.
I see. Okay.
So the question on that is fam has requested that be waived. Okay, so that's policy consideration for the city. I will point out that it's the only way you could be waived for expenses you have previously extended.
Can you speak a little louder? I'm sorry, I'm having a heart. The air condition is on the pin. I really can't get what you're saying.
This provision is the only way you can pay yourself back for previous expenses you may have spent on airport from the general.
But we can go back six years and do that.
Fam has requested this entire provision be waived. Okay, so that's a policy consideration for you and the city.
It would just be hard to make the decision without knowing what the figure is, you know, whether it's 10,000 or a million, or... We need to try to get a hold of that, Ken.
And for the council members, this is not an MAI issue. This is strictly a city council issue. So, a question on the annual rent, and also rent credits, aeronautical, non-aeronautical, both. Those are policy questions.
As to the annual rent repayment, I don't see an issue there. Any of the council have an issue with the annual payment over a monthly payment?
The only, the only consideration, of course, is that there is a bond that covers six months, but not a year. But you're not talking about a huge amount of money anyway, as I understand it, with the credits and everything, it's not gonna be like a windfall, sort of, or a huge loss if you pay six months. That's really good, no, but that's the one.
I guess what you're saying is, in the first years or first life of the lease, it's gonna be all expenditures on their part anyway, to get established. So they're gonna have so much credit that that figure's gonna be near zero. I see. So, in this, in this document, basically, they're gonna get credits for the money that they're spending out there in lieu of repayment. So, they're asking for annual repayment. We originally were asking for a monthly repayment. Either way, it's not gonna be a whole lot of money in the first few years because they're gonna be doing nothing but spending on big debt. So what Jerry brought up is that there's no bonds longer than six months. So technically, we wouldn't have any way of guaranteeing that we get repaid, but the number's probably gonna be zero anyway, so it's not really worth worrying about.
That's okay.
So.
I just thought, I just thought.
Sure. So I guess, does the council have any issue with that?
I know.
With the annual payment over a monthly? Okay.
Oh, no share for three years, then five, six, and seven percent range after that. That's true.
That, that's a layer out.
Yeah, yeah. Let's, let's go through them in order here so we don't get lost. All right. Next up would be the fam private investments in KAVO, maybe credited against rent payments. We discussed the scope of investments. This would be aeronautical versus, versus non-aeronautical?
It would be both or only aeronautical.
We originally asked for only aeronautical.
Correct.
They're asking for everything, right?
And part of that change is, originally, they have requested plastic plating be excluded.
Right.
They're now reading for a school that, and they stress the trust. Their concern is if they invest in that, that would be non-aeronautical.
I see. Okay. My opinion, money is money regardless of the type of industry it's being spent on. It's all being spent on city property anyway, so I don't personally have an issue with it, but that's up to the council.
You either want aeronautical or non-aeronautical.
Correct.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So, not seeing any oppositions there, so, next item. As far as the rent they recover from previous city investments.
Mayor, do you want to hold that item until we get the FAA comments? That's really your decision. It doesn't matter if I get
Is it likely to? Okay. You're talking about the last item, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I, I think we should at least find out how much we've spent out there. I think it'd be foolish to make a decision without knowing the full gravity of what we've got riding on it, so.
We're now on the revenue share item. Let me, let me preface this with, the airport is not breaking even right now. Okay, so we're talking about something that may happen, and may happen a long time in the future. We don't know. Okay, so this is really talking about revenue above in expenses. Okay, so your assets out there just have to belong.
Right.
Okay, so at this point, fam is not making investment in the airport until the lease is expired, then they'll start making investments in the airport. So majority of the assets, all the assets to date, were off the city. Okay, so fam has proposed no share for three years, and then small amounts after that, five, six, seven percent range. Now I'm gonna give you an example of what a normal public private partnership looks like, with revenue sharing when there is excess revenue. And typically, what they do is, they allow the private sector to fund its own terminal investment at the capital. Okay, generally, in the 10 to 12 percent range. Okay, and then above that, there is revenue sharing based off that terminal product. And it goes up. In other words, the more profit they make, the more revenue share goes to go. Okay, so the example here is, it's lower, I mean, there is 10, 12 to 15 percent. It's up above. 15 to 18 percent goes up, above 18 percent goes up a notch. Right? And the theory there is, government is not in the business of rich and private sector above what it's originally. Okay, so, and this has been a really big issue nationally. It's been published a lot, and talked about a lot, where there have been what they call sweetheart deals, where people have made 100% returns, 50% returns, and they've got a lot of bad press. So, the issue is, what do you want to do on revenue share? Fam, and what we've suggested, gets 100% up to 10% interim rate return. Okay, so they get a profit of 10% regardless, before the city gets any distribution at all. Okay, now that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you start making investments, 10% interim rate return is pretty sustainable over time. Okay, that's real money. Above that, we've suggested the city gets 60%, and fam gets 40%, with a caveat. If they earn their economic development growth goals, their amount grows substantially, 10% in three increments, which if they earn all three, it will be 70% of excess revenue, which would be allocated to fam and 30% to the city. We'll lay out the economic development options here in a minute for your consideration. So again, this is not an absolute. This is just examples for you to consider. In this, I would just caution that FAA will be reviewing this, and they will look very closely at it. FDOT will too. And FDOT has a lot of experience with public private partnerships and looking at revenue sharing type situations and interim rate return. So they're gonna look pretty closely at this.
Okay.
When it comes to that.
Jim, this, I believe this is one of your questions you had.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with the no share for three years and the saying after that, but when it comes down to the above that revenue share, I think, we already talked about this as being a partnership, and I think 50-50 would be good all the way through after, after the first three year.
After what percentage?
Whether it's 15 or 18, I don't care. It's just, I think it should be, same shares should be, they, the city recommended up to 60%, right? I, I think I would be happy with 50, about the 10%.
Okay. Think about that in terms of earning economic development goals too. Okay, so if we do 50, and we do 10, 10, 10, that means the city will only get 20% after the economic development goals are done.
Okay.
Okay, so just, and I'm not suggesting that's one way or the other. That's definitely a good starting.
Sure.
But we can think about that in terms of economic development goals as we get through this.
Sure. So obviously, keep in mind, we have fam here with us, so we have questions for them, I'm sure. This is probably a particular topic that they have a lot of comment on, so.
Did you and David have a problem with the 5, 6, and 7% that is being proposed?
The 5, 6, 7% is, is low in industry standards, considerably low.
Considerably low.
Yes.
And so, I mean, I certainly need to consider this as far as your deal.
And, and keep in mind, whatever excess revenues there are that the city gets are gonna be reinvested back into the airport.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so these are things you can't pull out.
They're not going to general funds.
They're not gonna be pulled like.
They're gonna be reinvested back into the airport.
Right.
So would this, it wouldn't cost the city anything at all? So it doesn't matter if it's money? What is it, 5, 6, and 7%?
Well, no, 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 no. 5, 6, or 7% is fam's proposal.
Okay.
Okay. What Councilman Bernard suggested was 50-50 above 10% rate return. Okay, which would be a different proposal.
Can I, this is Dave Bernard. I just wanted to also interject that this is of net revenue, so this is after expenses. This is sharing only the revenue that remains after payment of, of, of all the expenses of operating the airport. And, and remember that right now, the airport is not frankly breaking even, so it's gonna take some work to get to the point where they would be generating excess revenue.
But, but you felt like the 5, 6, and 7% were, was very low, right?
Yes.
Was that 5, 6, and 7% after a rate return or not?
I'm not sure.
This is JT with fam.
Yep, JT with Florida Airport Management. Thanks for having us today. That 5, or 6, or 7 was based off the materials that we did of, of other national P3 programs for GA airports that we found. We only found about half a dozen nationally. I think the ultimate consideration that needs to be made here is to comply with the grant assurances about whether or not funds can go back into the city. Whatever the split is between Florida Airport Management and the airport fund, who controls those funds? Is, is the city going to require oversight? So if we did split it 50-50, in essence, this Florida Airport Management is gonna keep two letters of what, this goes into our transaction rents. Any of the monies are allocated to the city, or I like to call it airport fund, because they are not allowed to go into your general fund. Are those funds still managed by the city or by Florida Airport Management? But we, and even though they are managed by Florida Airport Management, we still have an annual budget reconciliation to do. So we can talk about the upcoming year budget review, just like y'all have been doing over the last several weeks? Or is it something that, you know, we're still gonna, going to be able to spend those and allocate those funds as necessary?
We, we are anticipating that it would go through the fam process, that they would reallocate that in the budget and bring it as part of our annual budget.
Yes.
To be approved by the council.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So JT, having just heard what Mr. Clary said, do you have a response to that?
So we, we have been of the opinions to it's kind of been a delicate, we're trying to do what's right by FAA, and trying to do what's right by FDOT, the city, et cetera. If there is a 50-50 revenue share split, and the city manages that side of the funds, we might be sure to make what we need to do out of the airport. Or even the 6% business. Or if we're gonna try to reimburse what the city's general fund has spent over the last year, what would that mean? Okay, I thought that's, okay. As long, yeah, I thought you just said you would, okay. I digress. As long as, you know, we can allocate that annual budget and we have that financial operational control.
So if it's a percentage after IRR, wouldn't that then alleviate your worries about coming up short?
Yes, sir. Well, no, even before IRR, we still have to cover our operational expenses and wear works and all expenses.
So are they then protected regardless of?
Yes, sir. We've done it all. Fam has still, expenses have been paid, and they have
And allocations have been made and everything. So, do you feel comfortable that there's no issue there, that you're gonna somehow get blindsided?
Yes, we feel comfortable.
Okay. All right, having said that, JT, you see what the city's team proposal is here? In your proposal, the 5, 6, and 7% range, was that before an IRR, or was that after? Because it doesn't specify.
So that would be after an IRR.
An IRR of what?
We didn't do it as a, so when we originally proposed it, it wasn't on that revenue.
I see.
Okay, so the modeling that we did.
There was no IRR at that point.
Correct.
I see. Okay. So having, I, I don't know what your expected rate of return is going to be. I don't know if this is gonna be a 10% business or a 50% business. I have no idea what that industry is, right? So, if I'm sitting in your shoes, I don't know if 18% is so far above what I'm gonna make anyways, that I don't worry about it? Or if you're planning on making 35%, you know? So, from your point of view, whenever you see the city's proposal there, how far out of bounds from what you're looking for is this?
It's not out of bounds at all. I mean, I understand the FAA's position, FDOT's position on, I think more commonly people noted noted as usual fees, right, not to exceed 18%. And ultimately, we're just wanting to be of service to manage it accordingly.
Sure.
Set it up with whether or not we'll make.
Okay. All right. Yes.
Casey Roberts, 171 Lakeside Drive, Central Florida, CEO and CFO of the fam. I just wanted to go into, we're still talking about how it's tied into the economic development piece of the rest. We're talking 50 to 51% what it's gonna be after IRR, and the vaccine guys with this piece. So it really ties into the type of economic development. I don't understand. Just throwing this out there, that maybe we should talk about that as well. Back to this, that's, that's gonna be another piece of this whole conversation that is pretty important for both sides.
Are you talking about the actual goals themselves, or the percentage bonus from getting those goals?
Just the goals themselves.
Okay.
Hey, one last thing. We, we thought maybe today it would be good to get through the language and the legal lease. After the NII appraisals are done, then we can revisit what the actual figures are, because now we're not speculating on what certain items financially.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I guess a big point of what we're trying to do here is narrow the scope as much as possible. We're trying to make sure that it's not something that the city just absolutely can't live with, and we stop right now, you know, we're just trying to narrow it up. So I think we're all in line there. As far as talking about the actual performance goals as part of that discussion, I don't see an issue with that. Mr. Clary, did that sound?
Yes, sir. I've got, now, it's page seven, and I'm here now.
I believe you.
This is not an ABH or FOD issue. This is strictly the city, and Avon Park is policy.
Okay.
Goals, record, and development, normal proxy that's used by State of Florida, Enterprise Florida, et cetera, jobs. Okay, so the issue would be jobs, city. Okay, so the issue would be jobs, city. Okay, jobs county, or jobs from anywhere. So you want some of them to be from the city a percentage, you want some in the county as a percentage. Some relocated here as a percentage consideration, okay? Uh, we've heard from some council members a strong desire of a local opponent. So you could set a percentage goal there, you may not make it hard, but you may make that hard, it's up to you. We had initially thought about something like maybe ten or twenty percent in the city of Avon Park. It's an option. It's really up to you guys, we had set targets of fifty jobs every five years. Um, the question on the jobs is do they have to be only at the airport? Or can they be found in, uh, basically generated jobs outside the airport footprint as well? Such as farming, agricultural, those types of activities or others, that's that's the second question.
So jobs don't be in the city of Avon Park?
Pardon?
The jobs outside the airport, they still have to be within the city of Avon Park.
Question, either right that, you know, right outside the airport on the west side is outside the city.
That's it.
So the the question is, I've heard of, uh, heard of, it basically said that they're concerned that it, um. With the steel back, we did not come through with all the jobs that were that they had proposed. And there was a lot of promises made by fam initially about, you know, all the drop jobs that were brought to the city. And so, um, perhaps paying them down to, you know, city jobs. Or city and county jobs as being a second level or second tier. And then, um, but that being your decision, like, and we didn't want to put something down in in firmly. It may be something you're not interested in as a full board, that we just have heard that, so we had to put it in. So it was a weird consideration.
We we felt the job number standard is an incentive.
Right.
Okay, not as a penalty, but as an incentive.
Right.
That if those are generated, then Pam will get an auditors term share.
Okay.
I was reading in here, somewhere in here was talking about key, key position and key player jobs or something like that. So are those a job that you were speaking of that you want us, or is it a different job?
Key, key positions are basic requirements. Uh, like an airport manager is a key position and a basic requirement.
But the job you're saying that.
That could be counted as a job, but it's not out there often. So, but don't confuse the two.
That's what I'm.
Key position is really related to running the airport.
Okay.
Okay, economic development is jobs counted. Okay, that could be counted as one of those jobs. Okay, because it's not out there today.
Yes.
But they're not, they're not really the same.
So from the jobs, so as we make, they're going to have to keep a person, but the positions would be, you know, permanent, that's what we're looking at is. They're hiring people that, you know, that be, you know, uh, in city or county, your decision. For both, you know, but if you make both, it's like the fourth and county, city. And I leave, you know, leave that up to you to make that decision, but something you need to put some thought to.
Sure.
You know, what I.
And my thought, excuse me, my thought would be city and county positions. Because we have within the city and county of Avon Park. There's, there's a lot of people that's out of work, and I would like to see jobs created. Uh, not only just, uh, from the citizens of Avon Park throughout the county.
But would you be satisfied? Would you be satisfied if a hundred percent of jobs came from the county? Because if you say it's city.
No.
That's what, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
No.
That's what I'm trying to clarify. So we were saying like.
Percentage wise.
Yeah, fif- fifteen percent from the city and then let's say, you know, eighty five percent from city or county. I mean, I'm I'm just talking, that's what we're talking about, I I'm not, just nothing, I'm just. That's, that's what I'm trying to to say is, is that, is that what you want, it sounds like it is.
Yeah.
Do you want to make sure that your city jobs not all come from the county?
Exactly.
I have a question for Pam and JT, what do you think about the the goal the city has down there? Under five years for fifty permanent jobs?
Okay, thank you, uh, the the number of jobs is not concerning to us, we wouldn't, we can hit these benchmarks. The challenge is on two, when we when we define what they are, two things, what is a permanent resident? Currently you have to have that they have to be living in Avon Park for at least twelve months before they're considered a permanent resident. Second is, we will have to, will public and private dollars go through a master procurement policy, which we generated, which we've been submitted to this agreement? When we put certain positions out for bid. We cannot guarantee that the citizens of Avon Park will apply for those jobs. And so the the question is not, do you feel like we can hit them out of jobs? Whether they're direct or indirect, the question is, will they apply? Will they not apply?
Can we put something in there to say like, at a certain method time, if the citizens do not apply, then it would be okay for them to pursue other other avenues?
Absolutely, everything's got to go out for a reassessment. So they are going to be completely advertised, and so. The the our position is if if nobody comes forward or they're not qualified based on the the grant dollars that we're administering or not administering. How are we going to be held with a fifty?
JT, that's what I'm asking, I don't want to hold you to that, if if, but give us the opportunity. And then if it don't happen, then.
And I know just with with regard to the issue, you raised a very valid question with regard to residency in the city, under your charter residency since you're here. But would you be satisfied if they brought somebody in that was qualified? And they lived in the city, to allow them to then count them after they've been here, it seemed to me like that would be legitimate. They just couldn't count immediately, they would, it would come out the next, the next year's counting, they would use them then.
The the other thing I would offer is there are very good guidelines that exist today for things like disadvantages. Enterprise and other things where you go through best processes. To ensure and document that you have those processes. And we can build that in, so they have a way to get there and show the document, hey, we did advertise it twice. We cut out the top radio, did whatever to try to get applicants in. And we did not handle the city more than.
Can I just simply suggest maybe best way forward on this is let us wordsmith the actual statements in the in the lease, but give us an idea. Of what you're looking for with regard to how many city jobs and how many county jobs, and we'll try and figure out a way to make that work in the in the document. Yeah. So are you looking for forty five percent, fifty percent, uh, city jobs, or, you know, what what do you?
Well, number one, I think a percentage base is probably better than a specific number.
Yes.
In my opinion. Percentage base of living in the actual city limits of Avon Park, I know is going to be tough. As an employer, it's it's hard to find the talent that you want. And talent meets the criteria. Particularly if you're in an industry that's never existed there before, right? So farming.
But they could bring them in and let them stay here.
Right.
And and develop that residency.
Right, yeah, uh, so for the actual residency requirement. I mean, I'm I'm happy with thirty days, I don't know if they have to live here. We're not asking them to be a council member, you know, we're asking the council member a job.
But just remember, that means that they can move out after that. So you have that issue to deal with. I I would recommend to you here myself, if that is what your charter said.
But if they're going to move away, what's the difference between a month, a year?
It means that the next time they go, they report, the next report for the next annual, you know, if they're trying to give credit for this. They would have one less, so they have to replace it with another job.
Would the suggestion be that they're going to move here for a month out of the year, every every time they go to get counted?
I, you know, I don't know it.
Well, I'm just saying, that that's how you would have to play that system if you're trying to mess with the numbers that's it. It's it's unrealistic for a person that makes a normal wage, you know, if you're making a million dollars a year, sure, you can, you can do things like that, but. You know, if you're making thirty, forty grand a year.
Oh, I think you're more along lines of apartment, you know.
Sure.
So anyway, I I I'm probably trying to micromanage this too much, and I really. Why just have a bit of film for you guys, how much you want? And then let us work with the language and come back, and if they have a problem with it, we'll raise it to you and and we won't go ahead and decide.
Yeah.
Fifty percent would be too much?
I think so. So, uh, as far as having a address that says Avon Park, that would mean that you're in the same zip code, right?
Well, no, it's not greater, uh, Avon Park, if you're looking at citizens, then it's not their residence, it's inside the city limits.
Right. I understand that. I'm just simply saying that may not be necessary to go that dial.
That's up to you.
So the the other question we'd like to present to the council is, uh, direct and indirect job count. There are other entities that may be looking at lease space out there that we are not affiliated with whatsoever, they bring in their own amount of jobs. Of course, we can, we can help sub benchmark those, right, what those would. But we, if if they do come in and bring those jobs, they should be accounted towards Pam's obligation.
Mr. Clary?
I would say any job that's at the airport, why you're managing.
Not that's your consideration.
Yeah. I think it's.
Yeah, well, Pam actually hiring, that's the percentage that you're looking for from us, right? Is that, is that correct?
Well, we're looking for kind of, you know, which is, it's kind of a rough number, you know, not exactly, but but what is the percentage of in city job you want? Versus the the number of county jobs or city or county jobs, you know, in other words, if they have more city jobs, okay, great. But we're concerned about the breakdown between city and county. And you want, I mean, there's, I think I'm hearing fifty percent's too much.
Okay.
Thirty percent too low.
Yeah, personally, I would say ten percent. City limits of Avon Park, sixty percent county and the remainder.
Okay, I I agree with that, because if they do get fifty permanent jobs, that would give us at least five in the city of Avon Park under that description. I agree with that.
They will go with that fifty.
Okay, that sounds good.
Because they still got to get the fifty before they get the, what's called high cost bonus. That's pretty what it is, so that's a bigger incentive for them to do that. But we'll move on.
Okay, these are the the last items, and these are what we call the city approvals. Um, just as a reminder, the city will have to be under the grant requirements of FAA and F dot to provide supervision. Of the airport including the lease. And what we have in there today for council approvals is the lease itself. Which would include exhibits, any amendments to the lease, extensions of the lease or some slash sale of the lease holder. The council would need their approvals, which are free spins. Uh, master plan updates is an FAA requirement, you can't delegate that. But that's a standard requirement. We include the airport layout plan, and we talked about that earlier, that's kind of an allocation of. Aeronautical, non-aeronautical, and kind of won't give detail on the master plan. Uh, what we call the initial capital improvement plan, which is a transition plan. And what that asks is Pam to essentially assess the airport. And identify any and be of need and repairs like fencing and other things for safety, security and overall airport operations. And FAA has asked for that too, as part of them. So so Pam's already working on that, so we don't anticipate it to serve. Um, and that may be approved as part of the lease, but we'll deal with it thirty days after we sign. Um, it's to be in the draft lease. Um, the annual budget, which would include your staffing, that identifies, commissioner, during those two positions. Would be identified as part of that, as well as their management fee. The airport, uh, any subway slow rates that will be updated. Um, any acting, they could help them approve, so it will also identify, if the city had an allocation of excess revenues, it would also identify how the proposal. Of the airport.
So are there objections to this currently?
This, the only thing we're not discussing right.
We we have the rest of it here, so we can go through whatever, which we're just trying to go through this. Of course, it's first of all.
All right. But, um. If if we go through every, every detail in the lease, we'll be here till tomorrow.
No, I just, I I just have questions up, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, if there was something that that, you know, we could just give to Lo and have him, you know, work out. But but you have to go with.
Right, and the, any, uh, city funds that are invested in the airport obviously improve in the process. That's general fund, the C R influence of our city improvements. As far as delegations to the manager, uh, some leases that they actually keep with company manager. Just put it in the title, grant credits. Get proper in title, you know, future capital improvement plans. Detail of the, uh, action, the patient with grants and any of the investments.
What's a reading specifically, you still need direction from, uh, David or Lo? Uh, or any specific objections that we haven't gone gone through that fam has before we get into, uh. Uh, council member, uh, Menard's, uh. Questions, questions, no objections. Okay, David, do you have anything?
No, I think, I think we've covered that and 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 speaking with JT and his team this morning, we we resolved that. Uh, several of those issues as well, so I think we've covered it pretty well.
Okay, I do have one question on the economic development goals. Uh, the current draft of the lease requires them to meet those for extensions. Uh, so that's a policy question for the council. If you get thirty years out and they have a minute, they've done a hundred and forty jobs instead of a hundred and fifty, do you want to say no, or do you want to leave that open? That's a policy question.
It's basically to take away the the ability to extend if they can't meet those, so.
I would say leave it open.
Yeah.
Yes.
If we're getting a higher percentage. Maybe we don't necessarily want them to meet those.
True. I understand, well, I just, it's, did you?
Okay, well, that concludes our handout, so Jim, you had some specific questions?
Not too many. Because I'm not a lawyer, I don't agree all this stuff, but, uh. First one, which I think is something simple, I know was a mistake, whatever, under recitals. It says whereas the lessor owns, operates or maintains the airport. Are you saying they're going to own the airport?
You have a page there, Jim.
They don't, they don't have any pages on here. It's right after the article that tells you our page is on.
Councilmember, this is essentially stating where what the status is today.
Okay, that's good, all right. On the next page, under capital projects, it says, uh. Basically enhancing the aeronautical function of the airport having a cost in excess of fifteen thousand dollars. A useful life of one year, where do we get that item from?
That's just a definition for this, for this agreement, I don't know, but I, uh, was that the standard type of definition for capital projects for FAA or D F D O T or what?
No, it was, it was just a standard provision to put in there, and commissioner, uh, council member, we discussed this with fam, and they've had. Added non-aeronautical to this, so we we are okay with that. So it'll be aeronautical and non-aeronautical.
Okay. Uh, I think one question is might mainly for the city or the council, on page number four, about the less seasoned representative. I mean, this is a long-term agreement. Uh, I think we strongly have to consider what direction we're going to go with that, because as we know, um. People come and go on the council of all the staff, so that's something that I think the council definitely going to have to serve as they think about. Which direction we're going to go with that representative.
Yeah, I think it's just whoever you designate to so, you know, most likely the city manager at this point. But you may eventually have somebody who's a, you know, an airport.
So we can change this as the time goes on.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We just have to notify them who it is, so they they know who to talk to.
Okay. Okay, on, uh, page number seven, under item two, right to operate. I just want to say that I agree one hundred percent, the very last sentence about the operation of the airport for public aviation use. I think, I'm glad that we have that in there. Another question I have, somebody can explain to me about holding over.
Was that it?
It's on page number. It's on page number ten.
So the hold, uh, holdover provisions, uh, we've got two different ones. One is if you're negotiating in good faith, it's sort of the easiest one to think of is the, the one with permission from the city would be, for example, if the lease expires and you want to extend it with them and you're negotiating, you say you can stay here and just pay the regular rent. The second one, uh, paragraph B is intended to, uh, be a situation where you're not negotiating with them, you want to take the airport back. You, you don't want them to, to stay in the airport after the term of the lease expires and they refuse to leave. And, and that's, um, why it has a, essentially a penalty. It's a, it's a significant increase in rent that's intended to push them out.
Okay, of the hundred and fifty percent, correct?
Yes.
Is there a limit to that time period?
Well, I, I mean, the, presumably if they're not, if they don't have the city's permission to stay there, we can also go to court and get them evicted.
I think I've stretched towards two times then, but, okay.
Okay.
Next page, number eleven, item number C about base annual rent, so we adjusted under tenth, twentieth and so forth. Is this something that we're going to, the council will preview this every time we get to that decision, maybe?
Yes, sir, they're, they're required to attempt, and if it's extended each ten-year period, and this is a normal FAA requirement to update the appraisal.
Okay.
So as part of that, they'll update that appraisal and earmark the value approach will be updated.
All right, um, next page is number twelve, item number two. Basically additional rent commencement date equal to annual settlements over a period of no more than twenty years. Remaining fifty percent of fees and expenses deferred by the city in the review.
This is the provision that FAM has objected to, that we talked about earlier, which is repayment of prior expenses.
So we're moving toward that direction now?
Well, that's, that's your question.
We're waiting to get the, the fact, the figure of how much we've actually spent.
Right.
That's the same thing under, same page under item B, under revenue sharing. Where percentage we need to fill in, that's something we should wait on also.
I think we, I think we talked about fifty-fifty.
Okay. One fair fight. On next page thirteen, transaction rent. You'll pay the lessor a transaction rent in the amount equal fifty percent sale proceeds. We're talking about the city here?
Well, this would be if the city approves FAM selling it to a different unaffiliated entity. Uh, the city would get fifty percent of the quote profit.
And I think there's something in here too where basically it says if it does that, that they would give them a thirty-year lease. Did I see that in this document somewhere?
That's for subleases.
Yes, with subleases.
It's, it's a different topic.
Okay. Well, on subleases, I'm not sure I'm happy with that because if FAM leaves and we have stuff with the sublease that somebody they brought in, and we're stuck with that for thirty years, so when we get to that, I have questions about that part.
Wouldn't they have to, um, abide by the same rules and regulations and policies and procedures? That's my thought.
Yeah, so we had discussed this at, at one of the meetings and I believe it was talked about at length, I think one of these statements, uh, from someone at FAM had basically said that if they were going to do a sublease or get out of this lease, that it would be to an entity that would actually still be owned by them. Is that still the case?
That's still the case, but it's very easy to get this confused, is are they third-party subleases? Uh, that are not affiliated with us, they may need a thirty-year lease, uh, they may need a forty-year lease. And, and it's only going to be a case by case, but also if you'll see an exhibit K, if you do something of that nature, it still has a city council.
Well, consideration you could think about is the life cycle of the investment. In other words, in, in non-aeronautical, if somebody comes in and builds a building that has a thirty-year life and they have a mortgage on that for thirty years, they're going to need a sublease for thirty years.
Yep.
Okay, if somebody comes in and just rents an existing hangar, okay, that could be a short release, obviously. So it's something that to think about as a policy, that's the sublease is developed. Kind of direction you would get a thing on, on that. Uh, so that you have comfort and remember they're going to come to your representative for you. And sign off, so those, those would come in. That's typical and they, that we really need to understand, but normally you're going to look at what the investment is being made by who's proposing that. They're going to come in and make a major investment, you're obviously going to give them. And they're going to come in and just rent a hangar that you can do a five, like in the recent quarter.
Right. And then, uh, page sixteen? Page sixteen, can you, if I want, we're talking about here as far as the benefit fee?
Uh, the management fee would be their fee for actually operating the airport, the airport director. Uh, key staff that we have in the lease provisions and the actual operations of the airport, they're going to propose to you as part of the annual budget, but that's going to work.
Okay, so that has to be something reasonable, it can't be something that's.
Correct.
Okay. On the same page two, on no exclusive rights.
What was that?
Essentially, under your grant provisions from FAA and FDOT, say FAM has an affiliated entity that's going to come in and teach skydiving lessons. Okay? If another company comes in and says, we want to do skydiving lessons too, and we want to rent in a hangar, FAM can't say, no, we've already got skydiving. Okay, they have to allow that it's reasonable and, uh, you know, essentially the effort is there and the demand is.
Okay, that's my thought, thank you. Page sixteen, under item number G. Talks about storage, parking, maintenance, service and fueling of all motor vehicles. What I refer to that.
So typically, the, the lessy, in this case FAM, is going to have to have some vehicles that they, uh, use to operate the airport. They may push, uh, you know, martial aircraft by, uh, pulling them off of the taxiway and onto aprons. They may have, you know, they're probably going to have lawnmowers and other kinds of equipment, so, um, providing, providing gas and oil and ma- maintaining that equipment is something that they need the ability to do.
This will not be in the city, city parking lot area.
This would be within the, within the airport.
Okay.
But then, plus we want the, uh, air boaters out there to have the ability to get through.
Yeah. Winter egg, dog alike.
Okay, I just want to go over a little bit, uh, same page under item number N. Commercial hotel, industrial manufacturing. It's something that we're going to allow them to do for the hotel out there and so forth.
Well, to the extent that they need to change zoning, they have to come back to city council to obtain um, any, any zoning changes and you'd be acting independently of being the owner of the airport, in that case you'd be acting as the city council, acting as the zoning authority. To, so to the extent that anything like that would be needed, but the idea was to give them a fairly wide range of economic, um, uh, areas that they could invest in in case they, um, you know, if that, if that's how they want to do it, because we know that they're looking to um, have non-aeronautical activities out there related to American hemp. Uh, we know they're looking to do a bunch of aeronautical activities, both, uh, in favor of the, uh, their affiliate as well as trying to attract, uh, folks, you know, flying in for business and pleasure. Um, if, if a hotel were to make sense, um, you know, that, that, that would be part of what they would be proposing to you in a master plan, which the city council would have to approve. And, uh, the, then, then they would have to go through an approval process with the city representative at the various stages of construction.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm on page twenty-two, on operating bonds. Is there any problem with anybody about that fifty percent of FAM's budget for that? With FAM or anybody else?
Yeah, excuse me, annually, if our, if our reasonable operating expenses are two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, they could get to that over, over a period of time, and we just have to go on fifty percent in.
Okay.
And that, and that's a bond if you think, uh, money. Uh, and you, the intent is that it would be a transition for the city when case FAM, people walk away. So you go have a transition. Or the transition back to city.
Right. On some of these questions, I, I didn't know they were going to have this handout to go over, so that kind of covers a lot of those questions I had on page twenty-three, where we had all the yellow and squares. What we're going to do, work in twenty-three, basically, look over to your head. Okay, and you just go over quickly on item, uh, and that part.
Yeah, essentially, at the end of the lease, there is a time period, uh, when FAM would be providing information to you on the status of the airport and trend, the changeover of the airport. This essentially is a bond to ensure that those activities get done. Like, so they need to do an assessment and maybe use, maybe here with the master.
Okay, I think I'm almost done here. Spent a lot of time reading this out, that's why I have so many questions. I beg your pardon. I think the next one is going to be page forty-two, article twenty-seven, about the partnership.
Which page?
Forty-two, forty-two.
So, before you go on to that, can you get to page thirty-seven?
Yes, please.
And I have a question about the master plan. I read up to this part and I couldn't read. Okay. Uh, would you change the master plan, the airport master plan, or how would that work?
So FAM is expecting to develop an, a, a, an amended master plan for the airport that will show how they intend to and, and expect to build out additional improvements at the airport. Um, that has to be brought to the city council for your approval and then it would be, uh, taken to the FAA. It's a formal document that the FAA has to accept and approve, but we put an intermediate step in there as, as appropriate, the FAA would require that, that the city council review and approve it. That master plan is likely to be fairly detailed and include what they expect to do over various periods of time and it'll show what areas in the airport will be used for non-aeronautical purposes and what areas in the airport will be used for aeronautical, uh, uses, including building new hangars or adding new taxiways and things like that. So in their proposal, they had, um, a rough version of a master plan, um, already kind of sketched out for the, for the first, um, several. Now, it's more than a few years, it was at least a decade, JT, wasn't it?
It was a twenty-year one.
Yeah, okay.
Twenty-year plan, twenty-year.
So I think you can expect that within the first, uh, year or two of their tendency that, that you'd see FAM coming to you with a, with a amendment, amended master plan for your approval. And it will look something like what they had in the proposal, but, but, um, you know, given uh, the time and living with the airport and, and that sort of thing, I suspect it will, will be a little bit more nuanced.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Page forty-seven, under, uh, umbrella liability. I see that we have several other, uh, damage and injuries covered on there. I'm just concerned whether extra million dollars under umbrella liability would be sufficient.
If I may on this, uh, on the, with the underwriters that we've spoken to, it's already a requirement that we have ten million in finger keep liability and two million in comprehensive. Uh, that actually is probably over ensuring the assets currently. So they, you're correct, the underwriters said, seven was a little.
That's something that may be adjusted?
In ten years, this may be a business as well, you know, twenty years of service as well. So we, we have to have some, some way of reopening this and, uh, a fair way. Uh, David, you, you gonna say something?
I was, I was going to say what you just said, that, that you had, you had made of the point that we need to have the provision in there that allows the city to require, uh, different, different coverages, if that's appropriate, and higher levels of coverage. Um, if, if the existing levels become inadequate and, and basically you look to similarly situated airports um, for guidance on what that's going to be, but over a potentially forty-nine-year period, I can be pretty certain that a two million dollars plus a million dollar, uh, uh, umbrella would not be sufficient um, for that entire period.
Okay, so we could have something in the contract that said that could be increased.
Correct, it's in there.
Okay. Uh, moving right on here, page fifty, one thing that's really important to me is under article thirty-four, is item number eight, airport manager. They'll have previously operated and managed the general aviation airport, generalist airport, that who FAM has in mind? Can I qualify for that?
Yeah, we're actually, uh, Michael Ballard is one of twelve spaceport operators in the country, events, three general aviation airports over the last twenty-six years. Has two master degrees in general aviation and is A A A.
So you had that already in place as your person?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Need a definition of what a few means?
I could do, uh, a typical council member thing and say one more thing. I, I think I may be done. Just want to make sure, I mean, to be honest with you, I hope that when we finally get down to the final agreement, that we could have a separate meeting before we make the, uh, final approval to have any other items, uh, to go over to make sure that we agree with everything. But other than that, I'm happy with the, uh, answer that have been given to me tonight, so thank you.
Mr. Clary, uh, just to be clear, any council member can contact you at any time with questions and.
Yes, sir, in addition to that, um, we will make the updates and then we will be in a position to submit to FAA, so if you could give us that, uh, direction, that would be helpful.
Please do.
Your motion?
Do we have a motion? Make your motion that we give, uh, our city representatives, uh, permission to go ahead and, and to move forward with looking at, uh, some things you just talked about.
Right, and that'll be FAA and FDOT.
Yes.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Member Gray?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, anything else, uh, with the families?
We will bring it back and you know if we have an opening.
Thank you, guys. Sir, I just have one more thing, I know that you guys are going to discuss this in the morning, we asked you about the economic development portion of it. You guys brought up how we had discussed numbers with you on what we look for for goals, uh, to provide jobs in the area. That did attach to our affiliates, a wholeheartedly, the farmer's piece of it, being the farmer's network in the region. It was just brought up by Mr. Clary that the jobs that you were talking about are on airport jobs. So what we were requesting is not just at the airport, since the network as a whole is with our entities that we're going to be bringing out there, H M being one of them, the jobs being, the jobs that can be created out of the farmer network. Because as they start growing down and as they start, you know, getting bigger and bigger, they're going to need more personnel in those fields or whatever you're doing for them. We want that to actually be a part of it because the jobs kind of that can happen at the airport might be a little more specialized than what you might, might not even have heard of. Competition culture specialists, lab specialists, people that are going to require serious degrees to, to run those businesses. So that's why we, for those sections of that business. That's why we were requesting, and I'm just, I want to throw it back out there, just keep that in mind as you're going through that economic development portion. That's what you guys wanted and it included the entities of FAM, not just FAM itself.
Are these people going to be working and living in the county?
Yes, I mean, that's, it could be any corporate, we already said that, that it can be any, there's any company that comes out to the airport, but it was stated as airport jobs. If it's outside of the airport and out in the fields of Highlands County or the city of the apartment, should, we want that to count too. I'm saying it out loud because Mr. Clary mentioned it's airport only. I'm pretty much saying we would like it to be more than that, attached to our farmer network.
I, I appreciate that, um, would you all like to break that down by the percentage or, you know, just include that with the percentage you already said?
I would just include it for the percentage. I mean, why, frankly, you know, we don't care where they create the jobs or how much you.
That's what I was thinking of a more farm-type position to be counted as well.
Yeah, definitely need to include our part.
We have our direction, appreciate it.
All right, everyone from fam, we thank you very much for.
Thanks, thanks for our students, great job, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Yes.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seven, we have the first reading of ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-one.
The ordinance in the city of Bayonne Park, Florida vacated a fifty-foot by one hundred and eighty-two-foot portion of flat right-of-way line on the left side of property identified as. Twilight Park, original flat book two, page twenty-eight, and Twilight Park, reply of flat book three, page twenty-eight, including the west one hundred feet block D. And the half-closed contiguous road as vacated by resolution and official record book two oh two, two eight seven, page nine eighty-three, being point two eight acres. As reported in the public records of Highlands County, Florida, providing for certified copy to be filed with Highlands County Department of Court and duly reported. In the public records of Highlands County and by seven billion five conflict files for effective date.
This will be a first reading. Do we have a motion?
Of ordinance, yeah, to twenty twenty-one.
This will be for ordinance ten dash twenty-one.
Ten dash twenty-one.
We have somebody here from Central Florida Regional Plant Council.
We got them all.
Jeff Schmucker from the records since Florida Regional Planting Council. If you all want to go ahead and make a motion on that, that's fine. I do want to just bring up one issue. At the thing, is there any board meeting? There was a comment about a drainage or drainage facility potentially within that area that's. Those to be vacated. We're working with City Public Works Department right now to see, to investigate that further. If that is the case, we'll work with them, they'll need to work with the petitioner. There may need to be a drainage that's executed there. Will work to rectify that before it comes back to council for for second reading.
How long does that was the ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-one, and that was reference to drainage problem issue, right?
Correct.
And you're going to do what now?
We're going to work with Public Works to investigate that further to see where are the extents that might be. Part of that might be to be considered as part of the easement that the city will end up executing with the petitioner.
The idea would be to find that information out in between the meetings.
Correct.
If you still don't have that information by the time we're next meeting, then just postpone that till follow.
We're exactly, so we're working to rectify that before it comes back to the motion.
Okay, so we can go ahead and approve on first reading.
Correct.
So we had a motion by Temple Woman Gray. You still wish to make that last?
Yes, I do.
Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion in a second. Further questions?
Only question I had was about drainage that was addressed and it'll be further addressed before we actually do the second reading, so I have no issues.
And just to make sure, we'll do this, these vacated right-of-way are checking to make sure we're not getting off access to anybody's property.
Correct, yes. And so as part of the application, the petitioner submitted. No objections from public and private utility providers, but folks within three hundred feet were also notified of this as well, so.
But somebody's looking at the plats to see, make sure that that's not happening as well, right?
As far as connection for connection to.
Let's say a piece of property, if you vacate, if you vacate the right-of-way, they can't get to the property anymore.
Right, so so this this will not take away access to anybody's property, so that's what we're thinking.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next up, we have ordinance eleven dash twenty-one.
So also city of Bayonne Park, Florida, they named a planted alley right-of-way line between lot three and lot nineteen, block seven of Hatchell's subdivision in the city of Bayonne Park. According to flat thereof, as according to flat book three, page seventy, of the public records of the Soto County, Florida, of which the Highlands County is formally a part. And as per transcript book, page thirteen, public records of Highlands County, Florida, provide a certified copy of it. We filed with the Highlands County Clerk of the Court and duly recorded in the public records of the Highlands County. Providing for some really device for conflict, right, for effective date.
Hey, Jeff, one of these on this one's going to make a motion.
Uh, yes, sir. Again, for the record, Jeff Schmucker, Regional Planting Council, this again is another vacation of a, it's a planted alley right-of-way. It's located between, seeing the screen here, between the two two properties, which are actually the petition's properties, twelve oh four, South Carolina. Twelve fourteen, South Carolina, lots three and lot nineteen of the planted subdivision. Now, the request is to vacate a portion of that alleyway eastward, or alleyway right-of-way between the two properties on this end of that block within the subdivision. And so again, to answer the question. All public and private utility providers have provided no objections to this. Folks within that area were notified within three hundred feet. This alleyway will still remain open at the other end. We we recognize that there are some properties along that alleyway that would still require access. So this this portion, the the vacating this portion should not close off the access to any of those individual properties.
And I think whatever we make in property, we want to make sure, you know, so. Matter of course, if we're not promising anybody that's going to get any portion of that vacant area back. That's purely for them to determine with their own, either attorneys or surveyors or or property title searches.
Correct, yeah, the title title to the vacant space will be handled by the petitioner at the time that they report this and how they want to handle it.
All right, any questions to jump on that? Seeing none, we have a motion.
Make a motion to approve our ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
We have a second? We'll call a roll.
Member Gray.
Yes.
Member Johnson.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, before we move on, I'd just like to ask, after the planning and zoning board meeting part, there was an issue of concern about the cutting of the remaining area. Of that, was that taken care of?
Actually, I had Randy and I think Public Works went out and you want to talk about that, man?
It's honestly, it's over.
You gotta, you gotta go up to Mike.
Sorry. Sound glasses off to that. I perceive that. Do anyway. Thank you, sir. Uh, that that right-of-way, that alley that runs from South Carolina over to Delaney. Um, there is partial of it. It seems like each person that is, that affords that that alleyway kind of takes care of itself. There is a, one of the lots right behind, I think it's Arthur Edwards Place. That it is grown up to three feet, but that is not due to any technical current. And then some of the other towards the, or I'm sorry, Delaney side, that's clear. That seems like everybody's cutting their own grass there. We do have an issue with a fence that is blocking the right-of-way that's taken care of. Right now through code enforcement action.
Okay.
But on the other side, on the South Carolina side, that's that's pretty much straight through and taking it a tree. It's, it's really, it's from most of them, it looks better than most of them. Because every every block in that area has the same issue. That connects this to the two sides of the street.
Do you have a guess or no?
Uh, it's partial, yeah, part of it looks great, the other part is overgrown.
But no, the issue was that the city was supposed to be taking care of that. So my question was, are we doing that now? Because it was the right-of-way, that was some of the, the gentleman complained, well, that some people had put chairs on it and they couldn't get back there to cut it.
That that proved to be untrue. I I looked into that, that that was not put on the right-of-way. However, there is a fence that from the first house on the Delaney side that was put stopping the right-of-way. And that has been taken care of through code enforcement action. After that, you have a clear path.
Okay.
All the way down to that Jones house that was here.
Okay.
It's just a, there's some issue with some grass by his area.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that?
No.
Seeing none, item number nine, we have ordinance twelve dash twenty-one.
Or it's many future land use map at city Bayonne Park, Florida, and many one parcel covered four, six acres. Located at nine twenty white street and future land use of low density residential, medium density residential. Transmits amendment to the forty part of that cap to notification of the zoning, by yourself, by the conflict, by the effect.
Yes.
All right, council, again, Jeff Schmucker, the Central Florida Regional Party Council. Moving to the next slide.
This is a request by Mr. Raphael. This is a request to amend the future land use of zoning on approximately two point four acres of property located at nine twenty white street. The purpose of this request is to assign future land use and zoning to support future development of duplex units on this property. Next slide. Looking at the existing future land use today, it's low density residential, which permits a residential density up to six dwelling per acre. Next slide. And the existing zoning on the property today is R one low density residential, which also permits a density of six dwelling per acre. Uh, the proposal here is to assign a future land use of medium density residential, which would allow up to sixteen dwelling units an acre. Next slide. Uh, and the proposal to loosen the property to an R two, medium density, single-family attached to duplex, which would only allow the maximum residential of eight dwelling per acre. Next slide. So looking at the compatibility of this property with the surrounding area, what you have here is you've got a property that's surrounded primarily. We talked about existing land uses, uh, single family, it's a mix of single family, including some mobile home units, both on the east and the west side. As well as a number of duplex units as well. I believe the thing to take home here is the the request is to eventually develop duplex units on this property. Uh, the request to have the future land use change from low density to medium density residential. It does increase that that density from fourteen dwellings to thirty-nine, which is an increase of twenty-five dwellings. However, if it compared to rezone, which would be an R two for duplexes. Um, right now, under the low density residential R one, you get fourteen units out there. Under the R two, you can get a total of fifteen. So although the future land use would have an increase of up to thirty-nine total dwellings. Uh, the property would be bound by its limitation on its development by the zoning of property, uh, which essentially would be an increase of five total dwellings. Um, so just want to make that clear. I don't know if that was clear at the zoning board. I will let you know that they they did recognize the mild on this. Um, medium density residential in this area, particularly these blocks with the neighboring area. Um, it being mostly low density residential, but there is a number of properties to the to the east that are medium density residential. Uh, but again, the thing to keep in mind here is that the zoning would be R two, would limit that that full development intensity on these properties to an increase of five dwellings. Next slide. Uh, finally, just looking at public facilities and services, potable water, sewer, solid leases available to serve the development in the future that will occur. Um, in terms of traffic impacts, again, with five, an increase of five dwellings. Uh, it's almost a diminutive impact in the neighboring network system of the railways. Uh, the public county school board has been notified of this, there's capacity available for any student generation from this development in the future. Um, then again, the recreational spaces or open spaces in the city, again, diminish with a potential of five, five dwelling units. Um, with that, we'll stand with you to the question that you have. Thanks, folks.
This next one, first, how would that impact, you know, public, the emergency fire department, medical people and stuff like that?
Being that this property is centrally located within the center area of the city and that most of all these properties are being certified by fire E M S, this. These would be certified the same. Again, if there was an additional five units in in these to what is permitted there today. Uh, again, it's probably diminished. Um, looking forward, that's probably something we need to start including on here, especially with properties that we start looking at the outskirts to make sure that there's there's coverage in those areas.
Exactly, like the fire department, um, medical, stuff like that.
Yeah, and we and we definitely look at that at time of development. Um, even this property was fairly centrally located in the city to do that within the coverage area. Because of the, I call it a minimal increase based on visibility, somewhat of a diminutive impact in terms of what fire E M S would would probably be served with future development on that side.
The capacity of our fire department. I'm looking at the chief and he ain't saying nothing, so.
Yeah, with that number of units, that won't affect us that much.
It will not.
No, correct.
Okay.
It's also like you said, it'd be in the middle of the city, it's not like we're traveling forty minutes to get there.
Got you.
Right off main.
Could you go back to the previous slide, please? One more. Looking for the picture. You might know off the top of your head, on the actual map there, there's two properties that are in the west, maybe the northwest corner. Are those single-family homes or are they actually duplexes around? I know the church property to the south of it is duplexed. To.
Yeah, so the the northwest corner there, you see the two.
Oh, yes, right. So that so that block, you see the yellow.
Yeah.
If you take the extent of that that full block, those those two in the northwest corner there are currently duplexes. And then the ones to the right is also a duplex. This is block seven of this subdivision.
Yeah.
Um, right, so really the development that's out there today on this block is all duplex.
Yeah, so every half that block to the south of it duplexes, all of that block is duplexes. And we've got a much higher density to the west of that and to the east of that.
Correct.
Yeah. So was there comments as to why zoning board recommended amounts?
Um, I don't believe it's anything on record. Yeah, I know there was a, and Mark can answer this, but I know that we did have, we did have one person who called in and had some opposition to this. Um, I'll let Mark answer that.
Okay. Martin?
Wow, Brenda can hear me now, just cut it off. Basically, they don't want more duplex in the area. They don't want this many housing units on this size lot. They want a single family. And they want a special meeting to change zoning because they think we're allowing too many buildings on an acre lot. This is two points. So that pretty much sums it up.
Okay. Any questions from? Go, yes, sir. What can we do for you, Carl?
I'm Carl Cool with Cool and Cal Engineering Company, and I'm here to represent the owner, Mr. Raphael. And he's asked us to present this to you tonight. Uh, if you look at that map, as the mayor was pointing out, he bought his land with the intent to build duplexes. He saw the duplexes at the church homes on the south side. He looked at the density west of this, and he doesn't intend to get anywhere near that density. He looked on the east side in this mobile home park that's been there for a long time, not bothering anybody. And then he looked at the block, and I talked with Patty Palmer, who owns the northwestern partial. She is not opposed to this rezoning. The lady he bought the land from still owns the duplex that Patty's. And then on that block on the right hand, northeast side is a duplex. Now, this block and the block south that the church owns is on R one. I don't know how the duplexes got built. But they did. And what he's wanting to do is build more duplexes in there. Now, here at thirty-eight units, he didn't want any of that. He can get about eight duplexes built there. And he's building duplexes in the middle of where duplexes already exist. Except west of him, he's got those tiny houses that have a lot of density. He doesn't want to do that. And even one of the duplexes, he's probably wanting to live in. So so he's going to have a vested interest in this, and he thought he was doing something that fit in with the existing community. And in my personal opinion, I believe it is, it does fit in. He's building, wants to build duplexes in the middle of existing duplexes, but he doesn't want thirty-eight or forty units. He just wants about eight buildings in there for duplexes, and it's better than what's out there now. It's vacant now. The duplexes will be taxable property for the city of Bayonne Park, and it would fit in if you look at the quality of those duplexes. If you look at the quality of those duplexes and the quality of the single family homes on the north side of Prairie Street, the duplexes are not holding the community down, they look very, very nice, and that's what he intends to do. So I ask your consideration for this zoning change.
I have a question for you again, Carl. How many units total are you talking about? How many duplexes total?
Eight buildings, which would be sixteen units.
Okay, why is he anticipating fourteen driveways?
Well, there's a drive, there's two driveways wherever duplex.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve the request of the artist number twelve twenty-one.
Twelve dash twenty-one.
Thirteen twenty-one. My second.
We have a motion in a second, it's to be for twelve dash twenty-one, and the accompanying official zoning map for thirteen dash twenty-one. Any further questions?
I didn't, yeah, no question. What was the question of the location of the person that had a complaint? Where were you located at?
We can get the address, though I might be on record with claiming it's only born, I can let the city manager answer that. I believe it was to the block to the north of this, it was one of the single family homes.
Okay. Okay.
That's on the other side of Prairie Street.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing for resolution twenty-one dash oh seven, we'll be studying the final fire rescue assessments.
This is a show date on Park Florida, relating to the Division of Fire Assessment Services, facilities and programs in the city. Establishing the rate of assessment, officially here commencing October first, two thousand twenty-one, imposing fire rescue assessments against assessed property located in the city. Approving the assessment role and directing delivery thereof to the tax collector by percent really by center fact to take.
As I said, it's going to be a public hearing, a public hearing for resolution twenty-one dash oh seven is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on fire assessment cannot do so. Don't everybody jump at once. Ignorant takers, public hearing is now closed. Take it back to council. Do we have any questions for chief or any other staff? Go ahead.
The fire assessment that's being proposed tonight on this resolution is to, for residential is a hundred and twenty dollars per dwelling, is that correct?
Yes.
And what is, what is the fire assessment current now?
One hundred and twelve.
One hundred and twelve, so that's an increase.
An increase of twenty-eight dollars per house per year.
And that's the, if we could, if somebody could tell me, if you could remember, the budget was set on this increase of the fire assessment?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Okay.
Of which we will still be tapping into reserve, particularly with the proposal of raising the wages of the workers.
But we, that's okay, because we got twenty-eight point million dollars in reserve.
That's your opinion.
And it's my opinion, you're correct. So, with that being said, the increase of fire assessment from a hundred and twelve dollars to a hundred and forty dollars per residential dwelling, and with an increase of reusing funds from the reserve to balance the budget, is that correct?
Yes, with the hundred and forty dollars and the other changes, you would still be using funds from the reserve. And we don't know what that number would be at this point because we haven't approved the rest of the budget. With the main change coming from the raise wages. That's the main unknown at this point.
Gotcha. So, so, so that, is this, this is the, once the decision is decided tonight as reference to fire assessment, it cannot be decreased, it can, this is it?
It can be decreased later, but you're setting it for this year.
That's what we're talking about this year.
Every year.
Yes.
I'm talking about for this year for this budget.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
You are setting the number. You set one forty, the last meeting we had, two meetings ago, you set one forty as the highest you could go. This resolution you're doing now is setting the actual dollar amount that you're going to charge.
But can we, I didn't see in here, you said it was the highest that we could go, but what about if we wanted to lower it?
You are setting, you are setting the actual amount tonight. You cannot change it once you set it tonight.
I understand that, but I'm asking.
Lower it tonight.
That's what I wanted to do. So I, instead of raising the fire assessment to one forty, I want it remaining at, I would like to request that it be remain at, what was it, one twelve?
One twelve, yes.
One twelve residential?
All right, I disagree with that a hundred percent. We've already talked about several different items that we're going to increase of this year's budget, probably even a million dollars or more, and not only we're talking about raising for the employees, we're also talking about a possible huge increase to the sheriff department. I think we need, we're going to probably end up increasing the tax rate also, hopefully we can limit it less than the maximum three percent. So I make a motion, we move forward with approval of number D ten as is.
Is there a second? I'll do a second. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray?
No.
Member Johnson?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion failed. Motion failed, so is there an alternative?
Yes, I moved that we set fire assessment remain the same at a hundred and twelve dollars. At what percentage rate that was?
So, do you have any consideration for the rest of the group? Commercial, industrial, government, or do you only care about houses?
They, they change proportion to the house.
Exactly.
So once you pick the one twelve, the other will change.
Do you remember off the top of your head what the difference in revenue was? I know this one says one seven twenty-five.
If, if we stay with what we're at, we are bringing in roughly thirty-two percent of what the fire department budget is. If we go with one forty as the number, which we selected as the highest, that will grant us to about forty-two percent of the fire department budget. So when you, if you stay where you are, we're saying we're funding thirty-two percent of the rest, we'll come out of general fund if you know. You can pick in the middle, you could pick a hundred and twenty-six, which would be right in the middle of those two. Electing number twelve, but the basic idea is anything you don't fund from the fire assessment, you still are paying out of the general fund.
Right.
The fire assessment is designed that's sort of spread, that's out of everybody.
Yep.
And that is correct, but like I said earlier, I feel that we have funds in the reserve fund that we could use this year and consider raising the fire assessment next year.
I make a motion that we go with one thirty.
And then, don't cut me off from talking.
I just made a motion.
No, I was talking, it's supposed to be polite and wait till I finish.
If you don't like it, don't vote for it. Is there a second?
Second.
Like I was saying, we could take the funds from the reserve and then use it this year, and then consider raising the fire assessment next year.
It's just a downward spiral. You know that. It's not rocket science.
Eric, you got your opinion and I have mine.
Well, my opinion is, like I said before, we look at a large increase to the budget period, you know, we're looking at the sheriff at close to seventy-eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars besides the people, so I think it's only fair that everybody pays a fair share. And so, one of the way that everybody pays a fair share is through a fire assessment. I don't think an increase of twenty-eight dollars or, as you said, a twenty-eighteen is, I mean, who talking about?
Just over a dollar a month.
Yeah, dollar a month, I mean, come on. Sorry, that's what I feel. Fair is fair, right is right.
And that's time to deal with this aspect, okay?
We have a motion in a second.
What was it just reduced to?
One thirty, so they would all, I don't know what that percentage is, but they would all vote for it. So the proposal on the floor currently goes from one twelve, getting bumped up to one thirty, the max was one forty, which failed in the previous meeting. It'd be an increase of eighteen dollars per year and or just over a dollar a month. Any further questions? Call a roll.
What was the motion?
Motion was for one thirty. The max you see on the paper is one forty, this will be one thirty, so it's over.
Wait a minute, did it was there a motion about the one twelve? What happened with that?
Nobody made a motion, I made a motion at one thirty.
I made the motion at one twelve.
No, you didn't. You didn't make a motion, we were just talking about it.
No, I don't.
Okay, we can go back and watch the tape, but you didn't, you didn't make a motion.
Well, my intention was to make the motion at one.
Well, that doesn't count.
Made the same.
We have a motion on the floor. I think we vote.
We got a motion in a second. Is there any further questions?
What's the motion?
For one thirty. Seeing no other questions, call a roll. Member Gray?
No.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed three to one. Thank you. Item number eleven, proof simple square to be vernamaligned, the annual maintenance agreement. We've got Melly's name there, but information is before us. Annual maintenance fee of roughly fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. I'm sure David can speak to what this is actually for, if anyone has any questions. We all understand, it's where the operating system of the city currently uses.
Correct.
Is there any hope in the future that there will be a different system, or is the current staff happy with this system?
My hope is that there's a different system sometime in the future.
What's the likelihood that we can get votes for that, and you have any idea that would be a huge increase in price or would it be?
To change software, when we had, when Dan was still here, he and I interviewed a couple different companies that had software, specifically the same company that Sebring is using, and they have quite a sophisticated system, and you're probably looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to change software. And their annual maintenance was lower than what we're currently paying on this particular one.
Do you know how much lower was the five percent?
You're probably like anywhere between, you know, ten and twelve percent lower than what we're currently paying, but the software is a lot better than what we have.
Over the course of ten years, one doesn't seem the same.
Correct.
And I think that last year we went over this also, basically, a lot of call, most everybody said that this system that we have now is so outdated that it's basically what they're doing, just doing a patchwork to update a little bit, but not really make it cost effective, easy for people to use, or only trained on. I think I personally rather go in and move forward with getting a new system, spending the money now, and then have a low stream in the future. So, I mean, every staff member we have previously all played about it, so.
Yeah, well, I think identifying another system and seeing how much staff time would be saved by having a different system, it would be easier to train people. Would be interesting to see to me on paper. So, maybe for our next budget, if that could be thought about over the course of that year and put together so that we could see, is it going to save us money and not going to save us money? It may turn out that it's not worth it.
Right.
But we need to find out for sure.
Right, yeah, and it's a, it's a two-year process, once you make the procurement for them to bring all your data over and then start implementing it at the same time. It's kind of like our website, we're doing both at the same time, you just can't see the new one.
Yeah.
So they do the same thing, and as you get closer to saying, we're just about done, we'll take one more import, now you're live on the new system.
Yeah. I guess what another question will be is market share, you know, if Navoline is ninety-five percent of the market share out there, everybody uses it, but that's one thing. But if it's a dying breed, and there's something else that's going to be the future for the next thirty years, then everybody that comes out of college and uses that new system, obviously we want to have that new system, so everybody's. Okay. Any other questions or changes?
I'll just make a comment that this increase is a five percent increase, so that's. I guess if we don't have a choice, I think we need to move forward, but look at other options next year, I think we can do that.
Okay, is there a motion for that? Okay, what's proposed to us is fifty-four thousand, nine thirty-five oh seven for the Navoline.
I'm going to approve the central square annual SSB new order in about fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, since as requested in IDB.
There's a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Can I follow up with another motion then, that's what I just discussed recently?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and move forward, looking at other options for this software for next year's budget. Obviously, we got time, but I want to make sure that the staff that we have now starts looking into that, to see what the cost factor would be to change it next year.
Yeah, do you need a motion for that, or?
No.
No, they started looking. They don't need a motion, you still wish to make one?
We need to make a motion if we want to look forward to changing the software.
All right, so we have a motion, is there a second?
What's the motion, if you want?
The motion is to explore a new system for next year. We're not adopting a new system, it's just simply telling staff to look into a new system to see if it would be cheaper. There a second? I'll say, so we have a motion in a second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number twelve, we have a bid for construction of the new pit works at W W P P. This is originally a project put forward by Rick Whalen, Rick Whalen is the one that with us. So we have Rick Reed with us, so he will probably be the one to answer any questions that we have. Obviously, this is a project that has been put out for bid, it's a project that has been engineered, there was a considerable cost for that. Since this has come up, I have been faced with a few questions that I would like to have answered, I don't think to be answered tonight, but I've yet to actually visit the facility out there. I know this came up in a previous meeting where Rick had encouraged Councilman Bernard to go out there. I've never actually been out there, other than just driving around, never seen the system and how it all works, and what exactly this new pit work is doing. It is a very considerable cost of eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. So if there's not an immediate time issue that we can put this off, maybe till the next meeting or the meeting after, I'd love to have, take the opportunity to go out there and look at the plan. Okay. Okay. Do you hear me? I'm sorry. I was letting you know that Jameson is on here, there is questions you need to ask, but I would like to put this off as well, as you just kind of put on the. Okay.
That's fine, we will, I have a few questions here.
Yeah, all right, so is any of the council members, any other council members want to go take a look at the plan?
I do.
I do, but let me ask a question. I remember one time we said something, and someone made the comment, you can't go at the same time because your council's got to be separate, so can, can we just, are we going to be scheduling each individual person?
Yes, ma'am, I can give you my phone number at the end of here, and you can call me, I can schedule or operate a bit with the marketing. Plan as well, yes, ma'am. Do we need a motion to postpone tables? Motion to postpone, definitely. We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Who did what?
I made the motion, Jim, second hand. Ready for a roll call anymore? Member Gray?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a comment after the fact, too. I remember that when Rick first came here, we had something that was brought up to the budget, which are other items that he said that he was not part of it, that it was done by the previous engineer. that he said that he was not part of it, that it was done by the previous engineer or previous employees. And basically, he gave the okay for it, but he really wanted something he was involved in. And so my comment to this is, if we're going to go through a, a project that we don't have any proof that it's necessary or needed or second opinion or anything, I think we definitely need to wait until we get a new engineer in place. We'll let him look at this and get his opinion because hopefully he'd be the one that would continue to stay and live with it. Well, I think that can, that was a wise decision to put it off indefinitely.
I agree with you, um, I was hoping that by visiting the plant out there, um, there would be quite a few questions that get posed and then I'd then follow up with the engineer to, it may be something that's blatantly obvious and it just slaps you in the face, or it may be something that's still ambiguous and maybe we want to wait till, like you said, we have a new engineer, but.
I think the office of this project, it's aimed up to a year or longer.
It'll probably take us a year to get that.
Yeah, so I'm not ready to jump into something until we got an engineer to give us his opinion.
Yes.
Can I, can I have my time to you, show you guys what's going on out there so that you're aware of it? Because apparently Rick didn't, uh, make you aware of things that are going on out there. Like that opportunity, if that's possible, go ahead.
You, you want to talk now or?
No, no, we can go out there and show you.
Oh, yeah.
You can see, so you can have an idea.
By all means, Rick, that's, that's the whole point of it, though.
Why, why we need that?
Exactly.
Our permits requirements to give grid removal, or not to redo it anyways.
Right.
Of course, there's more to this.
That's why I want time to go out there so you can show me what's going on. All right. Item number thirteen, we have a council decision on early voting.
Okay, some information there from, um, Tony Alex's office. Obviously, um, council makes the decision to have early voting or not. Fifteen days is the max. She says in twenty nineteen, it said he held two-day voting and, um, her recommendation is not to do that again due to, it's not cost effective. Lots of work to assemble, disassemble the voting equipment and the return wasn't worth it as it did not give enough days for voters to get to the polls. Um, she and her deputy supervisor recommend going, if you're going to have early voting, go on six or seven days, early voting. The cost estimate, um, they gave me for six days is eight to nine thousand dollars. The cost varies due to postage cost for, uh, voting by mail ballot and the number of, um, early day you want, but that cost estimates on six days.
Now, there's a statute on when the early voting has to end before the actual voting day, right?
Yes, I asked her that, it would have to end, because I, I said I thought it was three, or three days. She said it would have to end and done to the thirtieth.
The actual voting day is?
November seventh.
That's seven, okay.
I think six days is acceptable, Monday through Saturday.
That sounds good.
Monday through Saturday? Yeah.
Yeah, before the following Tuesday.
I don't see an issue with that, does anybody have any other suggestion or?
No, that sounds good to me.
Okay. All right, that's what we'll go with, do we need a motion for that?
Recommended motion.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I recommend we go approve motion to, uh, do early voting the six days prior to election day in November.
Be the twenty-fifth through the thirtieth?
There you go.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other questions? Seeing no, uh, other questions, we'll call a roll. Oh, yes, ma'am, you have to come to the podium, please. So you give your name and address for the record.
I'm Sarah, fourth of three, Memorial Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this just for this year election or is all the years to follow?
Just this year, it, it changes every year, every, every election cycle.
Okay, so, and you would vote next year too? What the early voting would be for next, I mean, the next three years?
No, we would vote next year for next year's.
You mean the new position and the mayor, the, the, the city council position and the mayor's position is coming up next year? You will vote, um, the, the early voting for that year as well? Whether you're going to change, you're going to?
Whoever the council is next year would vote on next year.
But what I'm saying is you will vote, my question is?
Me personally or?
No, 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 you won't, I'm, you're the city council.
Okay.
Would it, would it stay six days for next year or you would revoke already getting?
You would revoke, you could, you could be zero, all the way up to, I think the max you said, Mark, was fifteen. The max is fifteen, it can be as little as zero.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll. Member Gray?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed. All right, regular updates.
So busy with three meetings, really didn't have one. Um, I just, right here, give them kudos and, um, actually Maria started, if you saw the front of, uh, city hall. I've got, uh, two people who called, said it looked good, you got somebody from the garden club, thought it looked really good.
Looks great.
Find you added, they said that really added to it, so I appreciate what you and all you guys did, and it looks so good.
You really stepped up, Rick, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the city?
No.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Lock the first turn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.